Seventy seven.
Good morning, everyone. This is Knox County Commissioners, August nineteenth, two thousand twenty five. Our first order of business is to have Jeff Pickrell talk to us about the Knox County water and wastewater program that we have. So Jeff, we turn it over to you.
All right. Good morning, everybody. We'll try to be somewhat slow on this. Let's have a bunch, have a bunch of little things here. So we had talked earlier, Barry, about a particular pump station. One of the things that we've done in the last week is we went around and then have cleaned all of the pump stations with, with our, you know, super backer truck mill that you remember a few years ago that we purchased, cleaned them all, power washed them, cleaned them all down, cleaned all the grit, all the grease, other desirables in there, all the ones that we could get access with, with the two main crew. So we just sent two guys out. There's some that are down over the hills that are going to be a little more difficult, but we will get to them. But that was some fill-in things that we were able to do. Next thing, Apple Valley Pump Station, Crab Apple Drive. We have had some major power issues since July fourth. I just choked on the electric bill. It was about ten times higher than what it normally is. They've got some unbalanced power that we ended up proving. We've been running on a generator for the last ten days. And of the last month, probably twenty out of those thirty some days. So there's no way that our power bill can be as high as what it is. So we're digging.
A E P?
A E P. We have, we've been in contact with their, their engineers. They actually brought up a recorder out. Didn't see anything to begin with. We said, hey, there's, there's definitely some issues here. Pumps were tripping out every day on line power. Once we went back to our generator power, we haven't had any problems with our pumps since then. So they went back out, looked at it again, and have found that they do have some, some power drop issues. I think it's going to take them some major engineering to take care of it. So right now, we're running on generator power. So thank goodness that we bought standby generators to, as pump stations, because it's come in handy. So.
Those are electric or like gas or?
It is. It's a natural gas. The one there is natural gas.
So if you get a bill from them, you'll know that there's an issue, right? If you're running on generators.
It's less than weeks, huh?
Yes. And, and I said, I need to go back out. I, I, I wish I could look at the meter because we, we normally are somewhere between twenty-two hundred kilowatts. And I think the highest one I seen in the last year is forty-two hundred kilowatts. It's thirteen thousand. And we've been running on generator. So there's, there's a problem. So one of the ladies in the offices, one of the ladies in the office is calling the billing department. And one of my field supervisors is calling some contacts that he has and said, hey, we need to take a look at this because that's pretty extensive. Other than it was causing us problems with our pumps snapping belts because it was dropping and a pump was turning down and then coming back on. And so we've, we've had some big problems there, but they're not always real readily wanting to accept responsibility. So run into that in a vast. We're working on that, but that's one of the good things of using some of that ARPA money to put in standby generators. It's been on God's in there. So for sure. Uh, we've talked about the last time, well, number six and the repairs that we were not expecting to do. And we got another little snafu a week or so ago. The air conditioner went out. Um, thank God, that's not a big deal. If we got a quote for about eleven thousand dollars. We ended up getting a second quote and got them down to eighty-five hundred dollars with us installing it. So we're going to be doing installation via with my crew. But we're up to about fifty thousand dollars on repairs on that well this year. And we was not anticipating that and it still is not operating. So we don't know. They're still waiting for the rest of the parts, pieces and parts to come in that the air conditioner should be here this week. Uh, we do have a portable pump that's in there. So hopefully we can get the air conditioner back up and running by the first of next week. My electrician's off the rest of this week in.
So me knowing nothing, me knowing nothing about water and who are that well being down, does it stop water flow or prohibited water flow for any residents?
Uh, it, it not, not at this point in time, but if well three goes out, yeah, we're probably going to be on a water restriction. Thus the reason why, and my next category, I think we talked about the last time, was moving forward with well number seven. Developing a, a third large well just for these circumstances. Because if something happens and you know Murphy's wall, something happens to three. Um, we've, we've, we've done some preliminary stuff of being able to run three of the small wells. We've talked to our, our people that, that take care of our skated stuff. And we believe we can run three wells and probably can take care of things. But you see demands like we did in July fourth. Um, yeah, we're gonna probably have a few issues. So.
Jeff, when you run those wells, so three is our main well.
No, six is our, six is the biggest well. Six and three are the large wells and then, then one, four and, and two are the small wells. So they don't produce as many gallons.
You cycle those.
We cycle them.
Yeah, that's what I said. You might explain.
Yeah. So we cycle. So, so what it is, is there's one, one big well and one small well. And when I say big and small, it's the big ones produce more gallonage, more gallons per minute than the small wells do. So there's always a big one and a small one on, running at the same time, but never two big ones or two small ones. And then they alternate. So if six is running and one's running, when they fill up the tank at the front, they'll shut off. And then the next time it calls for water, then three will run and two will run, or three will run and four will run, and they alternate back and.
So right now, three's running all the time because six.
Three's running all the time. Three has been running since, uh, guys, we're back into very first part of June. So yeah, we've been running with number three has been our main well since then.
Which could lead to failure at some point if you're.
Pour a lot of water from one. I mean, it's all in the same water aquifer. So chances are not, but hey, put one hours on three.
So I'm saying.
Where are we at on seven?
On seven, okay.
I mean, I know we, we've talked about that a few times.
This is stressful to me because it's like your home multiplied millions of times.
So, so well, seven, I have a contract to give to you, Jason, so we can get it up to, to chip for the engineering stuff. Uh, we have already been talking with them on some preliminary design stuff of how we want to do. Uh, we're hoping, yeah, this year that we can have that bid out to drill the well. There's, the well needs to be drilled, then there's water testing that needs to be done and pump testing that needs to be done and everything. Once we gather all that information, we put this report together, we send it off to Ohio EPA and they approve that well. They've approved the site, but they haven't approved us bringing that well yet. So they want to see all that water data. They want to see what the water quality is, which we would expect it to be good, that everything else is good down there. Uh, they want to know, you know, gallons per minute and making sure that, you know, the drawdowns aren't too much for that well, causing a problem with one of the other wells or something. Um, have the on that I have in here that I made a little check mark, just so everybody can be prepared. Is we will have to do a new wellhead protection plan, okay? And that is a three hundred foot circumference around each well, which we have to also include well number six, which is the one the close to the ball fields. If you bring this back up again, but it just so.
But it's already there now.
Um, well, yeah, but.
It's there, but what he was saying, this is the, the wellhead protection, the EPA, they want a three hundred foot radius around.
They want three hundred foot around each well that there is no impact. So whether they will say, hey, the ball fields are all right, that's kind of probably out of our hands, okay?
Is there any grandfathering with certain bills like that?
No, and the water aquifer, as I told you guys before, is so shallow. So, so it's not very far before we get to where our water's at. We're, we're seven and a half feet out of the road at well number one and four. That's why we put the fence up like we did because the waters, I mean, we hit water at seven and a half feet. So it doesn't take much to contaminate. If you contaminate one of them wells, chances are you can contaminate the whole thing. And when you contaminate them all, I'm not really sure. I already said, I'm out of here. So I don't know what, I don't know what solution is at that point in time. We're too far away from.
Remember, we talked about this, we worked with the ball. So we, the solution at the time was to put a fence up to make sure, because we knew cars.
They're parking.
Yeah, close. Park and they have an.
Yeah, my grand ass years ago.
Yes.
It could affect the.
So you propose actually replacing that well?
No, no, six will still be in. Six is still going to work. We're going to have three big ones and then three small ones.
Yeah, if we put this one in, we'd end up with three big ones.
Three big one and, and three small ones. So then if something happens to a big one, we're not paranoid as I have sleepless nights knowing that something can happen to three. Because it's their run for basically two months now, but it's.
Like a contamination issue.
Well, having attached in this, it's not going to, I mean, it's not going to go away. So EPA may say the ball fields are fine, that, that's what that use is. I'm just bringing it up so everybody can be prepared. And I don't give you a sticker shop.
That's why we don't allow them to do any, they can't put any chemicals.
Need to put any chemicals. I mean, we struggle with the same thing with, with our fence around there and trying to keep the fence we needed. And we've tried some organic things that have not worked, um, you know, to try to do that because the guys complain, there's a lot. We have a lot of fences to, to mow around down there.
So seven foot is the, that's the distance.
Seven and a half, seven and a half.
Anything on the surface is in there.
Pretty quick up in that front. Now we get back to well six, I think it was, it might've been thirteen, don't hold me to it, but I think it was like thirteen, maybe thirteen feet down. That's still, they're, they're, they're called highly susceptible wells. Now, Burton has the same thing. I mean, it's just where the water aquifers at. They're not real deep wells. So and you're not a hundred and fifty or two hundred feet down getting your water. So.
I mean, we don't anticipate any issue, but.
Don't anticipate.
But when you redo the protection plan, that's.
When you redo it, now we've opened it back, we've opened this can of worms back up again and, you know, so it's kind of been set aside and nobody's made a big deal about it. Just so everybody knows that, you know, when we turn it in, it's out of my control.
Hopefully the, hopefully the fence will help.
Hopefully everything, but I mean, there was one of the concerns that the consultants had right away. They said, well, what's that by well six? And I said. That's well within the three hundred foot radius.
Yeah. Yeah, they have a big lid.
Yeah, yeah. I don't, I think they do some, I think they do some false stuff too. I mean, I don't think they've been doing anything lately. They haven't even bowie down there real good, but.
They have city sewer, right? Into the bathroom stair.
No.
Mm-hmm, no.
Okay, I'm not even asking more questions.
Yeah, there's not public sewer down there.
Oh, wow.
They're dial houses.
Is that not a problem?
No, the townhouses.
Port of bodies.
Port of bodies.
Okay.
So, okay, so there, there we are with well seven. Jason, I will get you over the contract so you can get it up to chip.
We don't have a, do we have a firm pricing on all that stuff?
Firm pricing, I've got, I only have firm pricing on the design part of it, because we'll obviously have to do that and put it out for bid.
Yeah.
And obviously, we're going to probably be using an income of funds to pay for that.
What is that pricing? What is that pricing?
Uh, the engineering pricing, I think was, I don't hold me to it, uh, because I only looked it over really, really quick. I think we were about sixty thousand dollars to do the, to do the whole thing for pillar post. I mean, that was starting out the P T I and, and, and everything. So I think it was about sixty three. On engineer. Uh, skip down to something that's more pleasant. Yeah, I'm saving the best for last. P V A, uh, we just got the new permit, uh, with the new plant. They revised our permit, changed some limits and all of that, not anything big. Uh, it was effective August first of this year. They're normally for four years, but because it's been revised, it's only good till May thirty first, twenty twenty seven. So somewhere at the beginning of twenty twenty seven, I'll be applying for a new permit for, for P V A. So don't expect anything any different than what's on there, but there's a bunch of paperwork and, and money involved in applying for that permit. We also have gotten some more dirt. Can you hit? Please, thank you.
Dirt with water looks like.
No, not there. Uh, no, we're center virtue. Could you go, could you open back up and go hit that P V A place? Yes. Okay. There is the dirt we're getting in. That's the east pond. I know you two have not been out there. Bill's been there and has seen that. Jason's been there and been seeing it. Um, that's, we're, we're slowly getting it more tapered. It's been closed, but we're, we're filling in because we still have some groundwater issues there that we're pumping out. Um, pulling the other.
Will we, will we bring dirt in or?
Yeah, we're bringing, actually, we have gotten quite a bit of the dirt from, um, no, from the road construction.
That's, yeah.
So my guys, my guys hit up on that. This is the, this is the west pond. Um, you can see what it looks like. Yeah, looks pretty good, huh? So, uh, basically no groundwater issues in there now. We've, everything's, looks pretty good. So that's what the east one will eventually look like.
All the turtles go.
Uh, there were still some turtles under there. Yeah, they might be under the boat. Who knows? There, there was still a turtle out because there were still some water on the other side.
That's the color generator.
That is a, that is a backup generator, yes, for that, for the new treatment plant. That is, that is new last year when we put the plant in.
Right.
Yep. And it is diesel because there is no natural gas out there. So unfortunately, yeah, but it's away from, away from everything. So anyway, those are just a couple of pictures of P V A. I just wanted to show more for Bill and Jason because they knew what it looked like before. Uh, I probably should have included a couple of those pictures just so you guys could have seen what.
Well, we need to get them out there to do a visit so they can see it.
Can't see the new plant. Yeah, this, I mean, definitely, we're proud of it.
Speaking of plants, uh, the one thing I noticed, I've been out through there a couple of times lately. Is the sign. Can we put a little nicer sign out front than, is it wood with white and it says water sewer on it or something?
Are you talking at the?
In Howard.
That's not our property. We had to ask to get that. We didn't even have a sign there. I mean, we put, we put one. Yeah, we, we put that up and we had to ask the property owners if we're not, if we're not going on our property. That's a, that's an easement back there. We have a.
Ease my green.
Yeah.
Okay, never mind.
So, and the other thing, we, we tried to design it so we did not block the view of traffic when you were going in and out of there. So there was no sign and we used to have problems with deliveries because people, I mean, you don't really think that.
No.
It's, it's not. So, no, it looks really good in, in, at nighttime. I don't know if you've heard past, but.
I try not to.
It, it illuminates. Uh, uh, we don't have lighting, but your headlights.
Headlight.
That is right. So the headlights hit on there and it looks like it's lit up because I come in in the morning at six o'clock. So it's dark when I come in. And so it looks like it's lit. So I was proud of the sign. Okay. Wasn't as good as I thought it was. It's my idea. So I, I mean, it is always good.
We dream there.
All right, I got two more things and one of them is big, so I'll really hurry through. Uh, Harborview, you know, you know, obviously we've had some issues back in, in that area. We did a flush. We pumped water out of the lake with, with a bypass pump into our pump station and, and ran velocities and ran the gallons really high for four hours. It made a difference. We did get the line clean some. Everybody's afraid to pick it. So we did increase about forty-five gallons a minute, which is pretty significant with, with the pump station. We're still not where we need to be. Uh, velocities are really slow and when the velocity's slow, the solids fall out, the water keeps going. So we're looking at putting new pumps in. I already got a price on a control panel modification. We can take the pumps from there and use them at another pump station. So they're not just, we're not throwing them away. We'll have spares for, for another pump station. So to increase that flow at that pump station, which should alleviate some of those problems that we've had with some of the residents back there, you know, besides some of the repairs and stuff that we've made also. So, um, pleased that that worked and I still think picking would probably help some. But we, we looked at the pump curves and we're about where we should be with the pressures and everything. So that's the best we're going to get out of those pumps. Which just still isn't high enough velocity for there. You need four or five feet per second at best and, or, and we're like two feet. So.
I think the new builds out there are mandatory backflow, right?
Correct. Yes, everything, uh, when we're jumping on the water, any new construction has mandatory backflow, double check valve, they're non-testable. But double check valve, and then anytime anybody does any plumbing, um, once their water shut off and is redoing their plumbing in their house, we require, we, we require before we turn it back on. It's just kind of our way of trying to catch up with some of the ones that weren't done. Um, back at one of my other places, that was something big that D P A was on and we're talking back in the late nineties, early two thousands. They haven't said anything to us, but trying to stay proactive, you know, because it's kind of a, we, we hit talk, Jason and I had talked before about, you know, do we try to just do a whole thing. So this is, this is our compromises. We're trying to catch the, the new builds and then anything that when people are redoing their plumbing and try to catch. And then anytime somebody wants to pull credit, and if they don't have a backflow prevention, there's, there's the possibility of contamination in there. Slim as it is, there still is. So we require backflow before we give them a pool credit. All right, the, the ugly, the ugly part that we'll go over, um, center bird. You all know, we're still, we're still, still negotiating the contract. Um, things to throw out on the table for everybody to, to think over and chew fat over a little bit. We've done some preliminary engineering work out there. We're looking at six hundred and seven thousand dollars to, um, reline the main sewer line. Okay, that includes, and if you want to hit center bird, please. Uh, do the, to the, uh, center bird cost estimate right there. Okay, there it is. This is preliminary. Now, you know, there's some fat in here. There's some things that I'll talk about that we're trying to do right now. Has nothing to do with, with the laterals, okay? Uh, groundwater table is extremely high over there. We talked about it down well field. Uh, we just put the flow meter in at the pump station, which we have some pictures we'll show you here in a second. And four and a half, five feet down, five feet down, water table, water's that just staying in that pump fault that we just put in there. So that tells you how high the water table is over there. Chances are those lines are leaking today, even though it's dry. I don't know that for a fact. So we're probably getting a fair amount of I N I. We know we're getting a fair amount when it rains, but we're probably getting I N I even in the dry weather. Which is part of that contract that they've proposed back and forth to us. So keep that in mind. If we fix the main lines and we don't fix their laterals, I can guarantee you their laterals are leaking too.
And yeah, tell that the laterals you're talking about is from our lines to their.
From, from their, from their house through our line, they're responsible for it. But that's their lateral, okay?
So they don't be in that.
They be, oh, my, oh, my, correct. So if we don't fix those also, all we do is shove the problem to a different place. Because if the water is, if the pipes are here and the water's here, we fix this plug, but this leaking over here, it's going to leak over there.
And what Centerburg has, we're working through this, so it's not done, but you know, to charge us an additional fee for any I N I.
Over and above their water usage.
Yeah.
So whatever Delco.
I guess you'd be explaining to them what I N I is.
Okay, so, so I N I is inflow and infiltration. So it can be, it could be some pumps downspouts or it could be just groundwater running into leaking lines. Okay, it's old tile. It's, it's an old subdivision. They put tile pipe in there. There's trees back there. There's roots in there. We know it's leaking. We know there's roots in there. I mean, we've been over there and root cleaned. Which lies the next problem out there is that there's no access. Nobody kept anybody away from the sewer easement. So we actually have a building over top of one of the manholes. We can't even get into. There's fence all the way down through there. So when we start talking this project, we said, okay, well, we'll reline it. And that way we can blow liner. I'm not even sure if they can get in there. We're going to have to put some access manholes at the ends for them to try to do. But they can't fix the laterals without going in and digging them up. We can't. A liner is something that they just go in the manhole, they blow in this rubber like thing, less terms. And then they, they cook it, blow it out with steam and it solidifies. And it makes a new pipe inside the old pipe. As long as the old pipe is in decent shape, it could be leaking, as long as it's not offset and.
I would think those laterals are probably the old clay tile anyway, right?
Lateral's are going to be the same thing that that. So.
So can they do that to a lateral that you're?
No, because they don't have access points to be able to get in those. So there lies our problem. So now we, we can blow a liner, not interrupt the buildings and or the fence. But we're not going to fix the laterals without conventional digging.
And tell me if I'm wrong, we interject, but so the issue is in a real simplistic term is Delco provides their water. So Centerburg gets they, they get a billing basically from Delco that says somebody used X amount of water. And then they bill them for that same amount of sewer, right? In an ideal world, if you have no I N I, whatever your water is, that's how much.
So if those three, there's three houses use the thousand gallons each of, of month, you wouldn't give any more sewer than that, probably a little less.
Giving them, and so they're saying, well, we're, Delco's giving them this much water, but you guys are giving us a lot more sewer.
You're giving us X.
So we're, we're treating it and not getting built and not billing for it. And to Jeff's point, if we spend this money and fix our lines and the homeowner doesn't fix their lines, we're still going to be getting I N I. And Centerburg's proposing to charge the county back for any additional what they want to charge us for what we're sending them to the sewer. I understand that, right? And fairness, like, well, if we're sending you more sewer because we've got this extra water that's flowing in somewhere. Then, so where we're at now is, you know, in our negotiation with them is putting a flow meter in. So we know how much flow is coming out and then work to fix it, or then they will start charging us the extra. And so we really make, I mean, there is no, there is no money down there. Like, I think for an entire year. We maybe get ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Sounds like a losing proposition.
It's a horrible thing. It was a horrible setup from the beginning, the way it was structured.
I'm not throwing anybody under the fence that isn't here now to protect yourself, but that is just a terrible, terrible.
And I had another meeting Friday to negotiate again. Jeff and I went through, we were trying to we thought we were trying to simplify the contract, get it down. We, we thought we had it clean and simplified the way they wanted it. We sent it back to them. Their attorney's got a hold of it. Now they've added stuff back in and I thought they wanted out. So now I need to sit back down and say, why are we putting this back in? But you wanted it out.
The issue being if you push the, that lateral charge on the homeowner, then you got a fire going, a, a heat fire with the landowners, right?
Well, yeah, and they're, they're all, and they're already paying a premium for the sewer. I mean, you know, I, I don't know everybody, but we talked to one guy and he's two hundred dollars a month just for sewer.
Are you kidding?
Well, they have, they have a hundred dollar, Centerburg has a hundred percent surcharge.
They're a hundred percent surcharge. So whatever, whatever you would be paying in, they're outside the city limits. So they're charging double. So, yeah, that, that person was two hundred dollars. They, they shower someplace else, so they don't use any more than the minimum amount of water. That's.
And the setup was for the county to get fifteen percent of, wow, the bill.
Of the sewer.
Of the sewer bill, not the water. That's the way it was set up. So for a year, when they, when we, the contract stopped and stuff, get money. We were getting max of ten thousand.
Ten thousand, yeah, eight, around eighty-five.
You can see here, I mean, you go put six hundred thousand dollars in.
Well, six hundred thousand in just hour, and then we're going to have to pay a surcharge still on top of that for whatever excessive water we're still giving them if we don't fix the laterals.
So is there grants or something out there for these homeowners that may be able to help them with repair?
So, so I, I, we, we've already went through this. I just had a meeting last week and there really isn't any money. O P W C, we want to go down that route, which I know is kind of hard to do. Other than that, probably some low interest. Now, they thought that there was a, there was a, there's grant dollars out there for septic system, online septic system. So while I'm on the phone with them, they contacted EPA and they said, no, that will not qualify. So their laterals would not qualify for that specific pot of money that, for people, um, like me who live out in the country and need to do something with my septic system and don't have the money to take care of it, there, there are some grant dollars out there.
Yeah, and they, and they can hammer those to find out whose laterals are leaking though.
Not, um, yeah, I wasn't really finished. Okay, we got off on a tangent. I'm trying to cover everything today. So what we're doing right now is I've gotten, I've got one quote. Uh, if you want to pull off. You want to pull off that and go in, I, I took pictures to, to try to, so. Uh, do the, do the price quote up there. I, I have, I have another, I have another one. Um, this, just absorb this just a little bit. Um, minimum of two thousand linear feet at five dollars and fifty cents a foot, okay? This, is the, this company. Um, you'll see what they're doing. They're, they're, they're jetting high pressure and cambering and giving us a report. This would be on the main sewer line. Um, there's a lot of, there's a lot of crap down at the bottom, okay? That there's, there's a lot of issues here. Um, go, go back up, go back up again, okay? And then you're going to see that there's thirty-three houses and they're going to charge five hundred and twenty dollars for each lateral that they camera. Well, that was the point was we thought maybe not all of them are leaking.
Right.
Maybe we're not having problems. I'm not sure we're going to be able to get up some of them. But they have a lateral launch camera. So the camera goes down the main line and then there's a camera on that that launches up the lateral and can go up and look up the, the residence part. So that's the five hundred and twenty dollars each one of them houses to do that part. I mean, you're looking at thirty thousand dollars right there. Remember now, we don't make, we don't get any money from over there. So that's thirty thousand dollars. Um, just upfront to kind of determine what the line structure is, you know, does it all need to be replaced? Probably. Do the laterals all need to be replaced? Probably. But so we can confirm what we've got. So this is one of them. Um, like I say, you can see they got a minimum. I've got another company that I've worked with extensively. They're waiting on a, a couple of answers back about finding some water because we were trying to ditch everything off on them that they have to find the water. They have to get rid of the debris and all that. If you look down on this contractor, that's not even how they build this. So their prices would be going to be absorbently higher than that. Because if you go down to look at the, on the terms, uh, yeah, well, yeah, it's.
So your thought is none of the labels have ever been replaced. They all probably were needed replaced. So we're just throwing thirty thousand dollars down the drain.
Yeah.
To look at them.
Well, but I, I, I but we, then we'll at least know what we've got, I, I guess. Because maybe some of them are all right. Maybe we don't, you know, when we're going through, but to replace the laterals, you're going to have to get a hoe back in there to dig them up. To dig them up. You can't do them underground. And remember what I said earlier, there's buildings and fence and crap all over the place back there. I mean, the access to get to our sewer is slimming up. I mean, that's why some of these prices are like they are too.
Where's that at, the Centerburg, Jeff?
Uh, off of White's Road. Yeah.
And Delphina, isn't there any responsibility at all?
They're just, they just took over the water from Centerburg and Centerburg kept their, their sewer plants. I will, there's. Centerburg has a lot of debt on their sewer plant. If you want to look it up, they, they do. They have, it's six hundred, it's either six hundred and forty-five or six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year. So that, that's why rates are where they are at. Okay, um, that's as much as my budget for all of my debt service and I've got thirty thousand, so many customers that they have. So, so there's the ugly part. Go click on the other pictures if you want. So I'm getting another price, should have another price and then we can kind of circle wagons and decide what we want to do. This is the flow meter. Yeah, that's fine. Go back. I don't know which one's which, so you're just gonna have. Okay, there's, there's, there's the vault and there's the flow meter. So, and you can see, see the water is already in there. See, there's groundwater already in there. And that was right after, right after construction, right after they put the vault stuff in. So this is all done. Uh, we've spent about ten thousand dollars over there just in the last week, not including my guys' time. That was parts of materials to put this flow meter in to measure the flow from this pump station. Um, being click through the other pictures just so they can, I mean, just give an idea. So that, there's the flow meter, be the left, this little gray part. Actually put a valve in there so we can shut that off. These guys had this all ready to go. So we were down very little time. We didn't have to pump sewer. Um, and haul back to our plan or haul it to Centerburg or wherever. So we, we kind of did some preliminary stuff and they were ready to go. But that's, that's what it looks like. There's the, there's the hole before they put the, the vault in there. Um, that's where the bus was backing.
Yeah.
Over and.
So that'll, that will give them, or we're gonna collect data, but that'll.
We'll collect data, we'll have, we'll have daily flow data from there. We'll know what the pumps are pumping and know exactly how much water we're, we're discharging.
It's being asked to a computer that.
It, it was through a skate or through, uh, telemetry that comes back to the plant. Yes.
And I'm not proposing this, so I don't want to get people in Centerburg upset about proposing this. But the only other option to this, honestly commissioners, is we would put a plant in similar to like what we have in Blainsburg. And we would just take care of it ourselves. We wouldn't send anything to Centerburg. We would just, that would stop. And so Delco would provide water and we would be, those would be our customers. And we would just build a plant similar to Blainsburg and.
So I guess if you look at the cost now, it was a cost of a little plant.
Well, I, I guess.
Couple million dollars.
No, no, Blainsburg would not, a, a plant like Blainsburg would not be that bad. Now, you have to build big enough to treat this I N I or take care of the I N I.
You still have to take care of the I N I.
Well, you don't have to, or you're gonna have to build a plant big enough to take care of the I N I.
Cause you're gonna be, we're gonna be treating.
But start looking at like debt service is going to be on six hundred thousand plus adding some in there. I mean, start to.
Probably many bucks.
Yeah.
Might still be high because they're gonna have a bill plus debt service. So whether.
Well, they have a bill, but they're, I mean, is, but if you look at, if they all were paying two hundred dollars, and I don't know that. I, I know one particular customer was paying two hundred bucks, but start looking at the revenue you would generate if we, as Knox County was collecting that two hundred dollars per.
But you're gaining revenue, right?
Yeah. So you would help offset that debt service where what we're doing right now, we're not going to gain any revenue. By fixing that six or seven or eight hundred thousand dollars, whatever it is, when we get done replacing the main sewer line and all of their laterals as part of the project.
And if we don't do it our way, Jeff and I have looked through this is we're gonna get ten thousand dollars a year in revenue and we're gonna spend. We don't know. They're gonna charge per I N I and if we end up spending, you know, fifty thousand dollars a year to get forty thou, get to get ten thousand.
Are, are you saying this plant, Jeff, all part, couple million bucks?
No, I think it's like, I think it's much less than that. I mean, we, we spent what, two point three with engineering and everything at P V A. But it doesn't, it can be a Blainsburg plant, which is less operational costs on, on that and, and less construction costs.
But you would have to have, the EPA would have to.
Right. I mean, you know, we have to be able to discharge and all that. I mean, there's, there's a process. You can't just say, hey, we're gonna build a plant and we're gonna start discharging. But there was a plant there at one point in time, okay? Before the, the pump station, there was a package plant. Traditionally, these, these subdivisions, because they're out away from any, um, centralized sewer, they usually put a package plant in and somebody operated. They eventually get old, worn out, cause you know, you're looking at seventies, early seventies, they're worn out. And it was better just to connect to the sewer at that point in time than to upgrade a plant.
But as Centerburg say, have you mentioned this to Centerburg yet?
No, I just, I mean, Jeff and I are talking because there's, there's really no other option. Either we.
Well, I say right now, common sense is self mini builds plant, but I mean.
Well, I, I mean, I don't really want to operate because it's so far away from us. That's the problem with that whole thing and us taking care of that is. It's, it's a long ways from the plant, from, from Little Jellaway to go over there to take care of it.
And every day right now, they're going Blainsburg, you know, the well fields out the P V A, the regular plant and then to hit Centerburg. That's a lot of.
You said debt service on the six hundred and something thousand dollars. So is that the total amount payoff? Uh, the debt or it is there, is there interest and charges on top of that?
Well, depending on what you're doing. I mean, if you're, if you're, you're gonna be paying interest on it, obviously. I mean.
Unless you get OPWC or something.
Unless you get OPWC.
No interest.
Yes.
So what we've done in the past, and it's like out of the Howard plant when that was built. Everybody pays twelve eighty-nine a month in debt service. So on their bill, they pay twelve dollars eighty-nine, that's that service. We collect that, that, that's used to pay the debt.
So you're saying if we basically pay off their debt and pay the, and use the six hundred thousand dollars toward a new plant. We come out better. We don't have the debt service on it. We also.
You're still gonna have, you're still gonna have debt service, what, no matter which way we go, we're gonna have a debt service. If we have our own plants. Then we're collecting the fees from the customers.
And that would pay the debt.
And would assume that we would be able to pay the debt with that. If we just fix this, we're not collecting any money from the customers.
You're gonna have a million bucks invested in.
The only thing you would have to do is. At the end of the day, what is the average customer paying right now? And what would the average customer pay?
Pay to debt service.
To debt service. And if it's a savings, then you, then you're gonna get support of the.
At the end of the day, the first avenue, you're, you're gonna spend a million bucks and get no return. I mean.
We're gonna spend, you're probably. And we're getting no return other than we're going to get, we're gonna get the fifteen, we're gonna get the fifteen percent of what they. Well, no, you, you'll have. You'll pretty much cut the. I would think that we have a whole lot of a surcharge at that point in time. So we would get maybe our ten thousand dollars in revenue.
Is that something that we, if the commissioners decided to look at, would our K D S be able to help kind of just?
Yeah, we could get it, we could get it. Figure on what, what a plant would cost. But we're back again, this, that's why this flow meter is critical. I have no idea what flow, I mean, I, I have a guess. But I don't know what the flows are coming from that plant. So that's where the flow meter installing it, we're going to know what it is and know what we're kind of dealing with.
Cause it becomes our problem if we build a plant.
I N I is still there. So you gotta build a plant big enough. And so what, what is big enough? I mean, we did some flow studies at, at P V A before we built the plant. So we knew how much I N I and how much problems we, you know, we may potentially have. So the plant was large enough. So you didn't have a problem when it rained. I've had these package plants when every time it rained, you know, you got up in the middle of the night because they washed it out and were a mess because it had all this I N I. And we get it there.
I mean, the optimal way is to figure out a solution with Centerburg that's beneficial to the county and beneficial to them. Because they have capacity to take it. But if it gets to the point that. It was, we can't, you know, either it's not, it's, it's beneficial to them and it's not beneficial to us, then we have to look at what's in the best interest of our customers.
I think you need a couple things. First off. Our investment and then a return, which you mentioned. But it sounds to me like you're gonna need. Uh, maybe another employee or something because your territory is opened up even more. And Jeff says, you know, are that far away? We're that far away again. So it becomes a management thing also.
Struggles a little bit, yes, because.
Becomes a management issue.
Cause it's, you're, you're looking at, you know, forty-five minute round, you know, forty-five minutes over, forty-five minutes back besides the time there. Now, not to spend a lot of time there. Uh, EPA would probably require three, I'm assuming three days a week, half an hour a day. So it would be three days a week to check to go over. Hopefully telemetry would be able to send stuff back to us and we'd know what's going on like we do at Blainsburg. We go to Blainsburg every day. We go to P V A every day. It'll jell away every day, obviously. And we go to.
Jeff, does the county commissioners have enough land there to put in something like that?
Well, it was, there was a plant there before, so I'm gonna guess probably, I mean. Yes, those are all things we have to, you know, we have to look at. I can't just tell you yes for sure. And I've kind of looked at the footprint because. The, you guys haven't been down Blainsburg, but it's, there's a large footprint down there because it, it almost looks like a leach field. Or like expanded, you know, ten times over, but it's just the recirculating part of that, of that. So yes, there's probably enough room down there.
Well, I guess the question is. Continue to talk to Centerburg. But I don't think if, if you want Jeff to call our K D S. They get back in the envelope ballpark on without.
Yes. Well, they, they do, they do this stuff so they can say, hey, you know, we did one a year ago and this is kind of where it was at. So, you know, they give us a, a ballpark figure that, you know, is it a million or is it two million? Cause that makes, that makes a difference.
I, I would definitely move forward with getting a ballpark idea on that.
Well, we know there's a problem and we know it needs to get fixed. Need to figure out what options are.
Correct.
And once again, EPA have to approve the site that you're talking at.
Correct. Yes, they would have to approve. Yeah. So there's Danny dead stuff. I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a process. It's gonna be a process. It's not gonna be something that we're gonna have built next year and ready to go. I mean, it'll take us a little while. I mean, you're probably looking at two years right now. Yeah, that was it. That's why I saved the ugly part till the end and the, the. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get some, get some numbers.
I got some. Hey, Joe, we'll go ahead and get some. Mine's a lot.
Come on up, Joe.
I don't need a sewer plant. That, that's it. So I. I just, um, every year, I was there last year, every year the commissioners need to. Approve the updated coordinated human transportation plan. Um, hopefully Penny got copies of that to everybody.
Did we?
Yes. Um, just in a nutshell, um. The, the big changes where we added the, the survey results that Kat did last year. We updated some, uh, committee member.
Right.
Um, and there were a few.
And there was still one, you still had Lisa Mazzari on there. It's, uh, food for the hungry. She needs, they have a different person. And that, and then there's some editorial changes, least one at one point at near the end, you have, uh. Fast F A S T, then you go to F A C T or something like that. It's a editorial start. And then is there a way to update? Um, cause you start out with talking in two thousand seventeen information and.
Right.
Two thousand twenty-one, you know, it's all outdated information.
Yeah. And, and that's, this, this is, this is the end of this one. So twenty twenty-six, the whole thing's a rewrite. So we start from scratch. Um, so, yeah.
Job security.
Well, yeah, but, um, um, maybe. Because Cheryl's been in some meetings and, and, um. So I also have, and I can, I think I sent it to you.
You did.
Cause you're up. But there's a regional coordinated plan as well. And this year state O D A cut funding for that. So we have no regional plan again. But that plan is going to be, um. Recorded, it'll be with the state because the regional coordinator, her last day, she submitted that to her board. Recently to get so all that sort of stuff. So where it's going, um, this is good, uh, until. The first few months of twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, first quarter.
And then this one's just gonna be, it'll completely be. It, it'll, it'll be gone. And we'll start off fresh.
Yeah.
Um, and we're, we're hoping to collaborate some of the regional stuff that, that Lindsay did and everything, but, um, overall. Uh, you know, one of our big goals is to get, to be able to get people across county lines. And that was what the regional part was, to be able to work with the other transit agencies and stuff them. Uh, in, in our area. So we're still pursuing that with just not pursuing it with a regional coordinator. We're gonna work on it, um, and maybe county and all that. So that's why I add a little to it, but. But overall, yeah, it's just, just some minor updates and stuff. But yeah, the whole thing, it's a complete start over.
And basically all we needed to is just prove that you've given.
Yeah, it's just every year commissioners pass a resolution, um, you know, approving the updates and all that sort of stuff. And I'll fix the.
Yeah, if Cheryl knows I'm, I give kind of jerky about the editorial.
Yeah, it's, and, and it's. The, the, the state process is interesting. Um, frustrating at times. Um, because they gave a, um, template to do this many, many years ago. And everybody's trying, has been trying to update on that template and it just doesn't work. So we're gonna start over. Uh, we don't have to use O D A's templates. We use something that works a little more. That's a little better with the world. Thanks. You should have seen me trying to get the pages to line up, numbers to line up after we put the, the new survey. One of the interns that they had out help her, she went through and tried, she got all the numbers lined up because every time I do it, it revert back and. And, uh, I go from page twenty-seven to page forty-five and it was all this. So I gave it to one of those. College students have fixed that. But, um. But yeah, so, so there's that. And if there's any questions that commissioners may have on any of the other things that are going on from a transportation mobility standpoint. There's a lot of things happening.
Um. A lot of these grants aren't gonna come to fruition. We had previously on mobility, on the mobility side.
Um, I, I don't know where, honestly don't know where things are gonna go. I know we had a little bit of a, a little bit of bump. On, uh, a couple of bumps on the grant for state fiscal twenty twenty-six. It gets really confusing because. Even over twenty twenty-five, right now we're on state fiscal twenty twenty-six. So it really gets weird. Um, but some of the funding, uh, overall got reduced, um, because. I went talking to the state folks, they, the COVID money's gone. So that's where some of the, the, the funding, uh, on some of these programs and stuff. But for the program here in Knox County, um, for my, uh, program with mobility management and that. Uh, we took a little bit of a cut, but it wasn't huge. There were a number of programs that got cut completely. I will tell you, um, one of the reasons that we didn't take a big cut is we do. We lead the state and a lot of projects and programs. Um, so whenever O D A looks at our stuff, they, they're, they're happy with it. Um, so that's plus, we can keep that positive in the direction going. Um, but we're ultimately it's gonna go the title. I really don't, I don't think anybody.
Well, as you say, I've heard anybody says they have yet.
Yeah, it's, you, you don't know what, what's gonna happen, you know, tomorrow. Um, so the word coming from, from the special project office, which is what this is. Um, and. Granted, the only thing is, uh, this year awards and everything are gonna be lower, but their projection is. They'll, they'll go back up next year.
Really?
You know. Um, so, yeah, cool things going on. Um, we've got a lot of, a lot of things that we're working on actually.
That's your rickshaw thing.
Rickshaw, it's a tri-shaw. It's, uh, for, for Brenda, no, if you're, if you're not completely aware of what that is. Okay, so actually, um, and that, that has worked out so, so awesome. Um, so United Way actually ordered three of, well, United Way ordered two and developmental disabilities ordered one. So the two, um, that are, that are basically sit-ons. Are supposed to be delivered Friday. So they're coming in, they'll be delivered to Habitat because they've got loading docked. And then they'll be, um, um. Inspected and all that sort of stuff. And then they'll be taken down to the visitor's bureau.
So that, that completion will be win, Joe?
Those are supposed to be delivered Friday.
Friday? So I knew it was coming up.
Yeah.
And they're not called rickshaws or.
They're cryshaws.
Okay.
Developmental disability board, uh, is purchasing one that will actually take the change here.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Um, and they're not sure what the delivery time is on that.
So the visitor bureau be in charge of those?
No, it's United Way. The programs are United Way. It's, it's a really collaborative effort. We actually have a meeting with, uh. Uh, Jared Robinson about this afternoon because there's, everybody has insurance to worry about. So, you know, you have to have. But, but, but all the, ultimately the program now is in the hands of United Way. You know, you have to have, but, but, but all the, ultimately the program now is in the hands of United Way.
Yeah.
Uh, it started with, with mobility management with, as the contact, I mean, that's, uh, so it works out really well with United Way. But first Friday and September, the, the plan is the two tri-shaws. That are already here will be, will be on display down at, uh, first Friday.
What are the drivers gonna have the big round hats in there? Chin strap.
Where would they be housed? Um, where, where, what the, right now they're gonna be at the visitors bureau. In the building, um.
They, these are too wide to get them into the.
No, they're forty, I think. I think the width on them is like forty inches. But ultimately the plan is, um, and, and keep in mind all this, and you, you know, this is Cheryl, you do too. This is all come together. There hasn't been any fundraising.
Right.
Official fundraising. It's just been. Somebody saw Cheryl's story in the paper and, and made a real, up in Richland County made a big donation to get. So, so they'll be going to Richland County one day a month. But what we're, what the plan is, uh, we're actually gonna purchase, they're gonna find funding to purchase a trailer. And we're gonna have a trailer big enough to keep all three of them in and then we'll move them around the county. So they won't just be in Mount Vernon. There will be times that there will be, um, uh, uh, cycling without age. You event at, at Centerburg, it's trail.
They just made, moving around the county.
Will move it around the county.
So for those who are listening, explain to them in language that don't understand what these actually are, what they do.
So what, what cycling without age is, the program started in Denmark about twelve years ago. There was a fellow over there. Um, that, that saw the, uh, you know, we have our seniors, we have folks that, that can't get out and. Get on the bike trails, get around their neighborhoods on the streets and sidewalks and stuff. Due to, to whatever reason, a disability, uh, age and stuff like that. So he started a program and what a tri-shaw is. It's essentially, it's a cargo delivery bike. So it's two wheels on the front and then the actual bicycle is on the back. Uh, so whereas a tri, or what Barry's talking about with a rickshaw, two wheels in the back and, and the driver's on the front. So, um, so what it has is it has a really nice, they have a really nice bench seat on them with seatbelt. And all that sort of stuff. And, uh, so what this gentleman did is he was going to the various nursing homes in, uh, Copenhagen. And giving rides throughout the community, uh, to folks that couldn't get out on the trails and, and get out of their, their, uh. Residences and stuff. So that actually turned into a worldwide thing. I don't know how many thousand affiliates there are, uh, involved in it now. Um, we've given it the Knox County, um, update. Um, because we were starting off with one and then when, uh, a couple of folks heard about it, the fleet grew. Um, so basically what it is, um, you'll be able to, and we will take them to the different adult. Uh, centers and the different, uh, extended care facilities and stuff. Um, then we'll work with the E C Fs. Where they can bring residents out on their buses and all those sort of things to the different areas. We have. We have some of our E C, uh, extended care facilities that are not really in areas that are conducive for a nice bicycle ride, you know. That you don't wanna ride out on Route thirty-six or Route three and stuff like that. So it's all gonna be a, a coordinated effort and stuff, but it's all just. It's, we know that, uh, our seniors, our disabled folks that, that can't get out. Um, um, struggle. I mean, folks need to get out and they wanna get out. Um, so this is another, uh, platform to help them with that and get them out on our trails and get them out in our communities and stuff, so. It's, it's gonna be a really, really neat.
Trendy, you're a cyclist, aren't you? Were they gonna need somebody?
We're gonna need somebody to propel these people around. That's good, because, uh, we actually are, um, and I guess I'm gonna head up the, they call them pilots, the folks that follow them and stuff. Uh, I guess I'm gonna head up pilot training as the latest because I have an e-bike and they are e-bikes.
Oh, they are, so nevermind.
Well, but the thing is, um, it's, um, and if you've ridden an e-bike, it's a, it's an acquired skill. Um, I, I was pretty rough on me the first times. I have the scars to show it. Um, you start pedaling going around a corner and it kicks in, it'll throw you around.
Yes.
But, uh, the big thing is they're, and they're pretty maneuverable and stuff, but from the e-bike standpoint is to give that ride to where you're not. Because you know, whenever you stop pedaling, it'll slow down and then when you start, it'll speed up. So, so I'll, I'll send you an email. But, uh, yeah, it's gonna be an awesome program and the, and the participation and the acceptance of the public is really.
Do you have to have a license to drive the truck?
No, no, it's just, um, it's just, uh, we actually worked with a program down in Columbus. Who, um, and they actually loaned us their tri-shaw. They brought it up here for the, uh, the first, um, over at Canyon. And Walt Lewis was there and I don't know how many rides he gave around the inside, but it was like. Yeah, evidently it was the, the big deal of it, so.
Do we have to vote to approve his?
Yes, I've got it on.
Yeah, cause we need to. You're doing. So, so do, we do thank you, Joe.
Yes, thank you.
And, and any other, you know, any other questions you might have about, let me throw this one out real quick. We are, we do, we are working on three different projects to help. Folks get the out-of-county medical appointments, um, that can afford it. Um, so we're working with, um, Energy or Social Services. We're working with COAD, uh, so they're. They're over easy, the escalation, uh, development. And we've been approached by Catholic Social Service about the, the possibility of them coming in and helping us. You're checking us too, so a lot of good things happened, so, you know.
How's what you do work with, what? That is.
Bethany, Bethany, um, we, I, I, my program and I'm still, everybody, you ask. You have United State what mobility management they take over, that's that. So, uh, what I do is I coordinate a lot, so I work a lot with. Not only with, uh, Knox County grants, with, um, getting people, uh. Refer it over to them and helping them get connected. Um, we have a lot of folks, uh, and a lot of what I do is just awareness. We have so many folks out of the county that are not aware of the transportation resources we have available. No matter, no matter how many stories Cheryl writes and about how many things I put out there. Um, so working with the county transit system. We work, uh, uh, a lot on, uh, trip coordination. Um, if there's a trip that they can't do, um, I work on finding alternative transportation resources.
Um, you're actually gonna do a seatbelt training for seniors too, though, right, Joe?
Um, yeah, we're doing, uh, I, we have so many things going on. It's, it's actually, uh, that program's called FART. FART kit, it's car fit. And, um, it actually, we use it to fit our seniors vehicles to them because we have. A number of our seniors that, um, struggle to use seatbelts, so get, struggle to.
Joe, we need that.
Bill's kicking me out.
Well, we got it. We have it eleven o'clock that we have to get started with. Appreciate you, Joe. And then, uh, you wanna do the resolution?
We'll do it with the other stuff, that's fine.
Okay.
With executive.
Okay.
So thank you.
Do we have other stuff besides?
Sure. Thanks.
Appreciate you. This is my state business.
So for those who are watching. We're gonna get, do these, uh, three motions to be done. All right, so there's three motions that we need to do.
We have approved the coordinated public transit, human services transportation plan that Joe was just talking about.
I take a motion for that.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Those favor say aye.
Aye.
Then we have a utility permit on Simmons Church Road in Liberty Township for, uh. Just for Spectrum.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Those favor say aye.
Aye.
And then we have a utility permit for Bright Speed and this is on Apple Valley Drive, Howard Township.
And motion to approve.
And seconded.
Those ever say aye. And then I need a motion to be able to go into its second session.
Motion to move to executive session.
That is then regarding to the audit conference conducted by the auditor of state. With officials of public office that is subject of the audit concerning the two thousand twenty-four post audit and. So then it is an executive session. We have a first and a second.
Commissioner Luster, yes.
Commissioner to see.
Yes.
Commissioner personal.
Yes, so we, you know, we will go into executive session eleven oh one for the stated purpose that I have. And so we will adjourn, we will not conduct any other business at the end of the executive session. So that's it for today.